Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the thirty eighth meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. There are two of us up front, but we also have one online. Commissioner Hong, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
We turned the volume on for Commissioner Hong.
Is this any better?
A little.
It's a little better, Commissioner, but is there any way we can get that a little bit higher?
Let's see, how's that?
Still faint, but we'll, we'll, we'll get through it.
Okay.
Commissioner Hong, is anyone present in the room with you where you are?
No.
No, okay, thank you very much. Okay, I see there are meeting minutes to approve, Commissioners.
Yes, Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of the nineteenth meeting and the regular and executive session meeting minutes for the twenty first meeting as previously circulated.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing and seeing none. I also vote aye, the motion carries. The minutes are approved as previously circulated. Moving into the public hearings, calling agenda item number one, transfer application number two-two dash two-four-eight-zero-zero from Outrigger East LLC.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, member of the commission, Mr. Rai Robert Wioka on behalf of Outrigger East. Please, this is how the Oana East presented to my right is Barbara Campbell. She is the Vice President of Outrigger Hospitality Group. You have no changes in the vested report. This is a transfer based on a corporate reorganization from one Outrigger entity to another.
Thank you, Mr. Wioka, Mr. Rai.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support applicants, but statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Is there anyone who would like to provide public testimony as to agenda item number one? Seeing and hearing none, Commissioners, any questions, comments, or type of action?
I have no questions, but I will make a motion to approve transfer application number two-two dash two-four-eight-zero-zero.
Second.
Then a motion and a second, any objections or reservations? Hearing and seeing none. I also vote aye, the motion carries. Transfer application number two-two dash two-four-eight-zero-zero is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to call one item out of order, calling request our agenda item number thirteen, request number two-three dash zero-one-eight-six-three from TBB Holdings, Inc.
Well, Chair Vice Chair members of the Commission, Emmanuel Zibokalung, here on behalf of TBB Holdings, Inc., EBA Tex eight oh eight for the Hawaii Kai location. I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have and provide an overview of your request.
So this is unused dates, one hundred and twenty of them, is that correct?
Correct.
Did you use any of those days?
No, so when the original temporary was issued, they were still under construction. So there wasn't, they, they just opened, I would say about a month, month and a half ago and started using their second temp under that occasion. So we're just hoping to reallocate this first temp so that we can move through the licensing process.
Okay, so to confirm, none of these days were used, you weren't open at the time when it was approved.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners.
I have no questions. Um, I'll make a motion to approve request number two-three dash zero-one-eight-six-three.
Second.
Then a motion and a second, any objections or reservations? Hearing and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Request number two-three dash zero-one-eight-six-three is approved.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Moving back into our normal numbering for our calendar under licensed applications, calling agenda item number two, application number two-three dash zero-one-eight-zero-five from Kahului Laio Laia. Agenda item number two. Oh, there we go.
Hi.
Hi, good afternoon.
Thank you. Amber J. Crew here from Events International on behalf of Haleha. We are pulling the liquor license for this event, so.
You, could you just provide a brief description of your events in the security related to your event?
Yep, this is the annual May Day Concert. It's a program show that has a live broadcast feed to Hawaii News Now. It was held at Bishop Museum last year. This is its second year that we'll be hosting it. There's about four hundred tickets that are sold. We're expecting about six hundred to eight hundred total. The liquor license is for the entire property. We have security, we have rain security with ten guards as well as Bishop Museum Guards, two special duty officers and security checkpoints to check people's IDs for the bar location. It's basically a two-hour period from five to seven that guests will be entering. There's a pop-up M'keke Market, food and beverage, and the bar. And at seven o'clock, guests will be asked to sit down and watch the performance. That is two hours long. That is a live broadcast feed, and then they go home. The bar will be open from five o'clock until eight-thirty. The bar will close thirty minutes before the show ends and before guests depart.
Great, thank you. That was very clear. Commissioners, any questions or type of action?
So, a question is. So the minors, you're looking to have about one hundred minors.
That's it.
Without, with your total amount of ticket sales?
Yeah, that's an estimated number. This is typically a more mature crowd, but it is family friendly and we did include a lawn seating where, where about two hundred seats would be available. We've sold about a hundred and twenty of those seats right now where where guests can sit and put a picnic blanket on the lawn to watch. So there will be anticipated maybe a hundred minors. It could be less than that.
Okay, I saw on your floor plan, there's two entrances, one for a VIP entrance and then one for the regular guests?
Yes.
And will the people coming in that are going to be drinking, will they be banded at those entrances? Or will they be banded at the bar area where the, where liquor sales will take place?
We're gonna actually do both, so we'll have attendance at the general entrance and the VIP entrance. When they check in and give us their names, they will give us their ID as well, and they will get colored wristbands if they are twenty-one and over. And then there'll be two security guards at the bar as well to either check that they have bands and/or do additional checks at the bar front as well.
My motion will be to approve application number two-three dash zero-one-eight-zero-five.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations? Hearing and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Application number two-three dash zero-one-eight-zero-five is approved. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number three, application number two-three dash zero-one-seven-two-five from Memoirs LLC.
Good afternoon, Chairman Buckley, members of the Commission, Adam Miller representing the applicant Memoirs LLC. Appearing along with me is Taylor Patsion, its General Manager.
Hello, gentlemen. Could you just briefly describe this event and security related to the event?
So these will be three wedding dinners. They're fully catered wedding functions and Memoirs is helping to serve a full-service bar at each of these events. There's not additional security to my knowledge, but I'll defer to Mr. Patsion on that.
The, the venues in which we're holding these events are private venues and secured by gates, and there is a gate attendant present at those gates.
And I see this one in particular is relatively small and all over twenty-one, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Commissioners?
So, looking on the floor plan, can you just give me an idea of where the entrance is going to be? Because I, I mean, I see the front practice kitchen area, bay tree, patio, greenhouse, but is there a specific entrance point for your people to be coming in?
Yeah, so it's up on Tanalus and the, the house is behind a gate, so there is one driveway with a, a secure gate that will be monitored.
So the driveway with the gate will be your main entrance point?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay. And I know that it stated, everyone's gonna be over on twenty-one, are they, they're gonna be checking IDs at that point at that entrance area, or are they going to be just confirming that at the bar area?
So we're confirming at the bar and per my conversation with the couple and the wedding coordinator as well, there are no minors invited to this event.
Thank you, that's all the questions I had. Motion to approve application number two-three dash zero-one-seven-two-five.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations? Hearing and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Application number two-three dash zero-one-seven-two-five is approved. Calling agenda item number four, application number two-three dash zero-one-seven-two-six from Memoirs LLC.
Good afternoon, Adam Miller on behalf of the applicant, along with applicant's general manager, Taylor Patsion.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. This looks to be also a wedding, also limited guest count and also no minors, is that correct?
That is correct.
And is this similar in terms of structure to the last one?
This event is going to be held at Manukuhuna and also a monitored gate entrance by Manukuhuna Cultural Institute.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So, if you can just help me see on your floor plan where the gate is, because the other one didn't have, did have an area that said gate. What side of the floor plan is it on or top, bottom, left or right of the?
So, in the very top corner is the location of the parking lot. And to get access to that parking lot, you need an authorized gate code from the property. So if you look up towards, there's a, there's a small little hayal above where the dining and reception area is. In that area, there is a gate just above that, those trees and hayal area.
And same concept, you'll be, I know that everyone's gonna be over twenty-one, but you're gonna be checking IDs there as well as at the bar?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. I have no other questions. Motion to approve application number two-three dash zero-one-seven-two-six.
Second.
There are motion and a second, any objections or reservations? Hearing and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Application number two-three dash zero-one-seven-two-six is approved. Calling agenda item number five, application number two-three dash zero-one-seven-two-seven from Memoirs LLC.
Aloha, Adam Miller appearing on behalf of the applicant, along with its general manager, Taylor Patsion.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. And again, this looks to be limited guest count and no minors, also at the same location as the previous application, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So the, the previous statements made in the application prior to this would be the same as this application?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number two-three dash zero-one-seven-two-seven.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations? Hearing and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Application number two-three dash zero-one-seven-two-seven is approved. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number six, application number two-three dash zero-one-eight-four-three dash one through application number two-three dash one-eight-four-three dash three-zero inclusive from AFH Waikiki LLC.
Good afternoon, members of the Commission, Yobota appearing on behalf of AFH Waikiki LLC. Appearing with me is Harold Watanabe, the General Manager. We have no changes to the investigative report. For the record, applicant has been exercising daily special licenses since mid-December. This is a request to extend it further, and we are set for a preliminary hearing for the permanent restaurant license next week, Thursday.
Um, preliminary hearing next week, Thursday, when did you file your application? Do you recall?
Don't recall, it probably was mid-last year.
Yeah.
Commissioners. So, Mr. Go to, so, how's the soft opening been?
Very good, no problems.
And currently, I know it lists in the investigative report, team five hundred to a thousand people attend throughout the duration of the event. So do you have like an idea of a number that happens either in the three-day courses, three-day periods, or on a daily basis, an average number? I mean, the best, best test. I mean, the best best estimate you have, I'm not, I don't need exact, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, yeah.
Gauge how well it's going or if there's other.
Maybe a thousand or so.
Okay, and that's during the three day period or is it daily?
Daily.
Daily, okay, that's good. That's good to hear. Um, okay, I have no other questions. My motion will be to approve application numbers two, three dash zero, one, eight, four, three, dash, one through. Two, three dash zero, one, eight, four, three, dash, three, zero inclusive.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second and the objections or reservations here and seeing none, I also vote I the motion carries applications number two, three. Dash zero, one, eight, four, three, dash, one through two, three, dash, zero, one, eight, four, three, dash, three, zero inclusive are approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number seven, application number two, three dash zero, one, six, five, two, dash, one. Through two, three dash zero, one, six, five, two, dash, one, two inclusive from Pagan Eve LLC.
Afternoon, chairmen, commission, great new show for agent of very bad applicant. Uh, we have a need to investigate the report, have no changes there, persons there to. Um, we are unaware of any incidents that uh we have occurred, so I'm assuming that everything is going on fairly well.
Thank you. Um, commissioners.
So any, just having, I know it says in the report, you guys into spinning one hundred people to attend daily. You know, if that's the number they've been having or has it been smaller or bigger?
I would say. I would say it's probably inaccurate. Based upon, you know, our discussions with the. Management. Appliance management.
Outside seating area, everything's going on okay out there, yeah?
Yes, we have dedicated personnel up there watching. Um, it's like six hundred sixty square feet from my calculations, ten to twelve people there.
Okay.
Sounds good. Do you have um as application pending?
Yes, we do. I I don't know when it was filed.
Do you have a prelim yet?
No.
I have another question. My motion. Will be to approve application number two, three dash zero, one, six, five, two, dash, one. Through two, three dash zero, one, six, five, two, dash, twelve inclusive.
Second.
There are motion in a second and the objections, reservations here and seeing none, I also vote I the motion carries applications number two, three. There's zero, one, six, five, two, dash, one through two, three, dash, zero, one, six, five, two, dash, one, two inclusive are approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving into preliminary hearings, calling agenda item number eight, transfer application number two, two, dash, two, four, nine, three, one from Steve's Chicks Inc.
Nice. I'm Minya Wu on behalf of Steve Chicks Inc. On my right is President Su Jang Shin. No changes to investigative report.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions, uh comments or type of action?
So Ms. Wu on the floor plan. That does look like there's some outside tables, so you guys are not planning to license that?
Alright, so we had a hearing couple weeks ago, so this um. We got the approval for removing the reduction.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I was, I thought it was some, it looked similar in floor plan, but I didn't get a chance to search back through, so, okay. I have no other questions. Motion to approve transfer application number two, two, dash, two, four, nine, three, one.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second and the objections or reservations here and seeing none, I also vote I the motion carries transfer application number two, two. Dash two, four, nine, three, one is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number nine, application number two, three dash zero, one, four, four, zero from Kami Toku LLC.
Afternoon. To my right is the general manager for the premises. Her name is Yu Konse So. It's spelled, her first name is spelled YU. Her second name is spelled C E O and C E I C A O. I reckon it's like way like Wisconsin, we have no changes to the rest of this.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Commissioners, any questions, comments or type of action?
I have no questions. Motion to approve application number two, three dash zero, one, four, four, zero.
Second.
There are motion in a second and the objections, reservations here and seeing none, I also vote I the motion carries application number two, three dash zero, one, four, four, zero is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number ten, application number two, three dash zero, one, seven, six, one from Platinum Partners.
A good afternoon, member of the commission, Yogo Ta appearing on behalf of Platinum Partners Inc. Appearing with me is Gary Chen, officer. Uh, we have no changes to the investigative report.
So. She got that just so basically you guys are looking right to be able to. Use the license for the newer space, right, that you guys are trying to get into.
Correct.
Correct? And that's the back steakhouse place, right?
Correct.
Okay. Motion to approve application number two, three dash zero, one, seven, six, one.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second and the objection reservations here and seeing none, I also vote I the motion carries application number two, three dash zero, one, seven, six, one. Approved. I'm calling out of order related. Agenda item number sixteen, request number two, three dash zero, one, eight, nine, eight from Patty Chin.
Uh, good afternoon, members of the commission, Yogo Ta. I don't actually represent the shopping center, but this is related, so. This is Cliff Ogata representing the shopping center.
Sure.
Um. I guess the shopping center is trying to ask that the Outback Steakhouse license be canceled. Um, I understand that. We can't have two licenses on the same premise and so therefore. Administratively, before the commission could issue our catering license, Outback would have to surrender or cancel their license. It's our understanding, but I haven't been able to verify yet. That Outback has sent a letter to the commission, which has not been received yet. That they are willing to cancel it, but I don't know that for sure.
If I could just go on the record, uh, when this matter was scheduled for a hearing. Uh, we sent a notice to uh what was reported as the authorized uh agent for Outback, which was uh Terrence Lee. He contacted uh his client or former client uh Outback of Florida. Uh, he represented that uh for whatever reason, uh, when the Outback license. Um, lease was terminated, Outback retrieved the original license and took it back to Florida. So, um, but without taking action to either cancel or put it in safekeeping, so to speak. Um, Mr. Lee indicated that it was gonna be overnighted to us for action, the Outback original license with a letter requesting that cancellation or whatever. They were going to be asking for, we have not received it yet.
Eric, I represent the uh. Way Kaiton Center, acid manager, and just to verify that. Outback has vacated the space, uh, their lease expired on. Present March fifth. This year and um. Basically, uh, they no longer operate that, it is the six clients that they have the right to operate.
What is, have you had any communication with um Outback or its authorized agent regarding the license itself?
Yes, um. Karen, uh, the one that she mentioned earlier, basically sent me an email. And she did say that, you know, they're gonna terminate the lease and she's working with their. I guess you have, I think her attorney at, you know, their office in Florida. To work out the details, that's a ball line.
Well, I mean, it seems that we are getting there, uh, but without the licensee here, it's hard to approve a request to terminate their license. Uh, we don't really have anything in the record. Showing that the licensee themselves um are requesting or approve of it. Um, when did you say you you don't have a a time, Mr. I, when that was going to be said?
Um, well, it was, uh, I thought it was actually going to, I thought that perhaps the action would have been taken. Uh, or the matter would have been uh resolved and moved the the request by now. Uh, the commission has approved the uh the catering license for this process. What we would not be able to do is issue that license. To the applicant until the Outback licenses in and action is taken on it, so. You don't need to go back and undo the caterer license application, but we simply would not be able to issue that. Uh, license until the Outback license has been taken care of.
And just as a point of order, if um, for example, seven days goes by past the April twenty one date on the. Catering application, um, could the applicant come in and. And request those additional days on the catering application to be. Put on the back end of the application.
Uh, yes, and I guess what we could do is go ahead and schedule. Uh, uh, agenda item number sixteen for next week. Just so uh for sunshine purposes, we can report that either the matter is still pending or has been concluded. So we'll just plan to do that if if you uh. If that's your uh wish, we can uh not take action on it or continue it until next week.
Yeah, unfortunately, we have nothing affirmative in the record that shows that the licensee is. Um, either canceling or approving the cancellation of the license. I think we will have to continue this matter. If you do have any communication with them. Please provide that to us and we can include that um next weekend uh. In the hearing.
That'd be subject to. If they got the return of the license, would that be? What you folks?
Actually, we could, I mean, um, because they've they've already approved the catering. If we got it, let's say tomorrow. And then cancel it, we could technically issue that license.
Okay, because it's already approved. So now we can.
Yes, uh, we can go ahead and put this on for next week just in case.
Right.
And then if if it's not needed, it's not needed.
Because suppose it's, you know.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and in the interim, Mr. I, I suppose. In in the interim, the administration can work with. Um. The. Licensee for the catering application, if indeed that. Uh, license does come. Come in.
Right, if they need to, uh, in terms of modi- modifying the the start and end dates, we can certainly work with them on that.
Great, thank you.
So we don't need a motion, right, to move to the next week?
I just gotta just continue it, yeah.
Is there any other uh comments from?
No.
So agenda item number sixteen is continued uh to the next available hearing calendar. Thank you. Yeah, moving back into our calendar, uh, calling agenda item number eleven, request number two, three dash zero, one, eight, five, eight from Nami Kaze LLC.
Good afternoon, members of the commission, Yogo Ta appearing on behalf of Nami Kabe LLC, appearing with me is Paul Afro, manager. Uh, this is a request for uh batching of liquor.
It looks like there are. Five cocktails that you will be batching.
Correct.
Details are provided in your letter, which we have um on file in the record. Commissioners, any additional questions in addition to the letter?
Yes, a couple of quick questions. So Mr. Go to your clients, bartenders, if any of these five cocktails. Were to be asked to be made in front of them, they're able to do that?
Absolutely.
Next thing I would say is I do see there's quite a bit of juices in these three, and I know that you're looking to keep it for about three days. Let's make sure if it does start to change, we watch it and don't. Do it. Um, also, I guess my other big question is with that three day. Thing you're going to hold, if you make more than one container. Right? Are you guys gonna be dumping that remainder of the one container into the next one or how are you guys gonna do some of this card of it? Okay. So yeah, that's the only questions that I had. My motion will be to approve request number two, three dash zero, one, eight, five, eight.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second and the objections or reservations. Here and seeing none, I also I the motion carries request number two, three dash zero, one, eight, five, eight is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number twelve, request number two, three dash zero, one, six, zero, eight from Tokiwa Inc. I think that's right. Please, uh, state your name for the record.
Uh, Jasmine Teo.
So this is a request to reconsider on the fine that was imposed. Or a violation. Um, I have in the record that the violation was for. The words not being. Open, doors being locked during hours when alcohol is being consumed. Your your letter makes reference to the sublease issue. So could you just please summarize um your request? It seems like there's a a bit of a disconnect between. The underlying fine and the requests that you're making, at least the description of the request that you're making.
Um, I think I'm. I don't know why we're not doing both. I'm gonna give her a copy of. Maybe you don't have a copy of the letter. Hold on. We don't. And hold on to that. Thank, but um I wasn't sure. I think today was supposed to be for the for the name. Change also.
The name change. I don't, I don't think there's anything else before today for. For your licensee. I think it's just the motion to reconsider. And the motion to reconsider again is only related to. The imposition of the five hundred dollar fine for having the doors locked. Um, during different hours. The other comments that we made at that hearing and any other potential. Adjudication that there may be is not before us today.
Okay. Um, well, I think for this one also, we were just wondering if there was a possible way to do a payment plan. To pay instead of paying all at once.
Um, I I believe there is, you'd have to work with the administration, Mr. I, uh, do you have any comments on that?
For uh, for an amount that's um, it it certainly depends on how much more time. Uh, certainly, they meet the the threshold, it has to be under a certain amount and five hundred, we can uh. We can uh deal with, but I think if uh our our discretion is limited to giving an additional like thirty days, that's it. So if you want additional time, uh, let uh to spread out the payment of the five hundred dollars, which is all we've got on the agenda today. The commission would need to um. Approve that uh proposed payment schedule.
You can work with the administration on on that and if you.
I mean, do you think, uh? Are you prepared to accept? Uh, a payment plan worked without, which would only give you additional thirty days to pay, or do you need? Extended relief?
I'm just confused because I, we have gotten to. Um, we need to do two separate hearings and then I came to the last one and then you guys moved it to this day. So I'm confused as to why we're not addressing the in the show, the other one. And why I have to keep coming back like. So. Only memory that I have in the adjudication that we had with you with this item was. You had some leased your licensed area to a different name company. They had gotten a violation for leaving the doors locked.
Mm-hmm.
And. You were not, did not understand at that point when we talked to you about the fact that you, even though you subleased to them, you still had the whole lease for the property. And you would be liable for whatever they do based in your licensed area. Right, but we didn't have a hearing for that specific sublease problem. Right now, we're just doing the hearings for the door being closed, right? So I don't know why we have to keep coming back and then you guys don't like, you know, like do it at one time, because I tried to come the last time, but you guys. Cancelled the hearing and then I still had to come. Here, because we didn't, we were notified that the hearing was cancelled, so I still came here and then they told us that it was for another day. So I thought that was for today also with this. So that's why I'm saying like, I don't understand why we're not addressing. That sublease. Issue yet. You know, and then I have to come back again for that. Initial issue, like another time. That's what I'm.
Yes, simply you receive a notice of hearing. That would tell you the the dates and time that you would have to show up. We don't have any adjudications on our calendar for today, so it wouldn't have been calendared for today. Um, I don't know where the confusion is, but it's, we don't have adjudication today.
Okay, so I guess my question is for the reconsideration thing, there's like, my best understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. I. You can like ask us if you'd like to like break it up, like say you can pay. Two hundred and fifty dollars now and in two weeks or thirty days, another two hundred and fifty dollars or. Based off what Miss Harai has just said, we can say we can give you an additional thirty days, but that would be to pay the full amount of the five hundred dollars. Am I correcting my explanation?
Yeah, correct. I mean administratively, we can um grant you up to thirty days to pay. For this amount.
Okay, that, that's it. I think initially we just wanted to be on a payment plan for both. Hearing, like if we had, like say I have to, I have to come back for.
Hearing, like if we, like, say, I have, I have to come back for another hearing for this sublease issue, right? So we were wondering if we could, that's why I thought we were doing everything today. So we needed a payment plan to not be able to, because we won't be able to pay two fines at one time, you know what I mean? So I thought that this hearing today was for that sublease issue, but now I have to come back again. And that's why I'm just confused as to why.
Right, so, so at present, the, that second adjudication hasn't occurred, so there is no penalty. That we've imposed for the second adjudication, because we haven't heard yet. So you're welcome to, at that hearing. Provide any explanation, um, and then if there is a fine imposed, you can also request that that fine be treated. Differently than the standard, so there could be extended time, or there could be some conditions related to the payment. And we could consider that at the time of the adjudication. But unfortunately, we don't have adjudications today and that's all.
Yeah, that's, I'm back serious. Okay, that's fine. I don't need to rehear and for the same thing, I just. I thought we were doing that, and then you're trying to go from there, not from back.
It's really up to you what, what, what kind of relief you want for this particular five hundred dollar fine.
Right, but. What I'm saying is that we need to do, we need to know how much we owe for the next one in order to see. How long we need for a payment, you know what I mean? Because our business has no customers right now. So we're trying to figure out how to address all the problems at the same time. So we understand how much time that we need to ask you guys to give us. You know, because it's hard, there's no customers, we're not making money, and then you guys are finding us, so. I need, what my issue is, we need to have the hearing for this second issue, so that I know how much we owe you. So that we can ask for that tonight to pay. You know what I mean? Like, I mean, we can pay five hundred dollars in thirty days, that's not an issue, but say you guys sign us a thousand dollars for the second issue. And then now we owe you fifteen hundred dollars, which we're not going to be able to do. You know what I mean? So I'm misunderstanding, because I thought we were coming here for this second issue. When it's, when it's not, you know.
Uh, but one of the current concerns is as we approach license renewal time. Is that, uh, unless there has been arrangement being made. Uh, the licensee will not be able to pick up a renewed license until all outstanding penalties have been satisfied, so that's. Maybe, un- unfortunately, a little bit of pressure in terms of making a decision to dispose of this one now, because we don't know when. That second adjudication is going to be scheduled for hearing, right?
Um, but, and this is probably a question for another day, but if we in our order. Um, let's just say as an example, we impose a fine for the second adjudication, but delay. Collection of that fine for sixty or ninety days. Then that wouldn't be an outstanding, would that be an outstanding, um?
Right, that would, that would permit them to pick up the renewed license, and this, it's just mainly triggered by the standard, um. Uh, time when, uh, licensee has to pay after a decision and order is served, so if the decision order length. Indicates a later, um. Obligation payment date, then that would change things. So just have to remember to do that, right?
So it, so today we're only dealing with the one fine, because that's the only fine that you have presently.
Okay.
So if you can't pay that within the thirty or extended in additional thirty. Um, we can deal and we can have this conversation again at the adjudication hearing, uh, we certainly want to try and. Um, work with you, uh, in terms of a, uh. A payment plan or something at that time, but right now we're only being able to deal with the five hundred dollar. So concerning that fine. Need an extension or payment plan for that, or are you okay? Just paying that fine and then we'll deal with any potential penalty.
Okay.
Up to you.
Well, I mean, I'm not sure. I have to talk to her, so maybe I'll just make a phone call outside. Because I'm not the owner. I'm just talking for her, so I'm gonna call her when I'm out there and I have to talk to them, right, about doing a payment plan or whatever.
Well, we ultimately, I think, I, I, I might be wrong, but I think we ultimately have to. Here, see if we're going to extend it to a thirty day period. For you to be able to do that. And we don't want to hold you in the sense of being stuck, right? Um, am I correct with that, Mr. I?
Uh, if we, uh, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that.
I'm getting this like, we're, we're trying to establish, I'm sorry, uh, um, it's Jasmine that. We're trying to, uh, confirm that you're authorized, an authorized agent for the licensee. To represent the licensee. Um, before the commission. This is what I'm getting pissed about. So if I, if, I guess if we could just.
Should we move this to the end of the hearing?
And then we can talk to the front count, at front counter, and you can also talk to Ms. Teal, that her, the owner's name.
And Miss, Miss, I, could we, could we make a motion to, um, permit a payment plan? Um, as to be determined between the licensee and the administration, and then allow you to do that.
Yeah, that way I don't have.
Outside of hearing.
Can you just do the thirty days of them?
Oh yeah, that one that we can do administratively.
Okay.
Uh, up to thirty days and under two thousand dollars, we can do that administratively, so we could just work out those details. Uh, offline, so to speak.
Okay, that would, that would afford you the maximum flexibility we have for this.
So in thirty days, we can just pay this one.
What you need to, it, what, uh, well, I would ask is that the licensee make a, uh, request with a specific. Relief that she wants, in, in other words, uh, on such and such date, which would be within thirty days of. Uh, today, I guess, I will pay the fine of, I'll pay the five hundred dollars.
Okay.
Like that in, uh, a, a written request.
Okay, so, um, I have to write it today.
Uh, you don't have to write it today, I think you can just get it to us as soon as you possibly can.
Okay.
If we could like have this conversation offline.
Right.
With, with someone at the. The acting ASO, the acting administrative services officer is outside, if you could kind of work out some of the details with her. Would you mind?
So I'm just asking if we can just have a motion to allow for a payment plan.
Right, to be, uh, to be determined or worked out with.
Even found worked out with administration.
There's been a motion in a second, any objections, reservations here and seeing none, I also, I, the motion carries. Um, the administration and the licensee, uh, shall negotiate, or not negotiate, but shall, um. Uh, coordinate for payment plan, uh, for the fine imposed on the February twenty third hearing. Thank you. Okay, uh, calling agenda number fourteen, request number two, three dash zero, zero, three, two, four from Bloomingdale's.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commission Members, Kenneth, appearing for the. Licensee, I am also the authorized agent for the licensee. This is a request to approve a, a conversion of the licensee from. An Ohio. Operation to an Ohio LLC. There were some intermediate steps along that way, which are. Very carefully noted in the investigative report. Um, but this conversion was made necessary because of COVID. And financing issues which came up from that. Uh, the licensee is one of probably seven hundred different stores. That fall under. B C's retail holdings, which is the parent company, and they all follow under the umbrella of M C C. Public, publicly traded into. Unfortunately, notification was not made to the commission in a timely manner, and we will face that. Issue at the time when we get an adjudication hearing. But that is, uh, that is what has happened.
Thank, thank you. Um, commissioners, any questions on the conversion, the adjudication will, as noted, um. Uh, come later.
I have no questions. Motion to approve request number two, three dash zero, zero, three, two, four.
Second.
Been a motion in a second, any objections, reservations here and seeing none, I also, I, the motion carries request number two, three dash zero, zero, three, two, four is approved. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you. Begin to other business, calling agenda item number fifteen, request number two, three dash zero, one, eight, eight, seven. Uh, from Newton Chu on behalf of Target Store two dash, our T dash two eight eighty.
Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners, Von Cook appearing on behalf of licensee Target Corporation doing businesses, store number T. Dash two eight eight eight, with me is Mackenzie Plunkett, the executive team leader of, uh, store T dash two eight eight eight.
Okay, so you're just asking for an extension to activate the license due to a delay in construction.
So, that's correct, um, Chair, um, my understanding is that the store, which is, um, in the. Windward Mall is scheduled to be opened about July thirteenth. For soft opening and I think permanent openings, I should call it, or the grand opening is, um, July sixteenth. But, uh, we just wanted an abundance of caution to ask for an additional six months to activate the license. To take into account the possibility of construction delays.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions or type of action?
I have no questions. Motion to approve request number two, three dash zero, one, eight, eight, seven.
Second.
Been a motion in a second, any objections or reservations, hearing seeing none, I also, I, the motion carries request number two, three dash zero, one, eight, eight, seven is approved. Thank you very much.
Will indicate an additional six months.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Calling agenda item number seventeen, Liquor Commission's six month review of operations for benchmark hospitality of Y E LLC.
Afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. It's your I, Robert Wheelke, on behalf of Turtle Bay Resort, uh, presenting to my right, Mr. Joy, he is a resort manager. Uh, this involves a, I guess, a six month probationary period for the self-service of distilled spirits. Um, this is previously approved in October thirteen, twenty twenty two, we've got no problems, there are limitations on the service of distilled spirits. Uh, two ounce limit, uh, per serving, three drinks, um. Yes, at a time, at, per day, and restricted hours, five P M to seven thirty P M, oh, point of that is to do the sunset only. Uh, so it's a real limited, uh, limited period. Uh, the customer's appreciated, our request to be able to continue it, um, and we are fine with the existing conditions.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
So. Just confirming, I mean, I know that we have. Attic going for a while, um. Has there been any, yeah, I know you probably said there hasn't been any issues, but. Uh, has anybody received any overconsumption, or guys doing a little bit too much, or? Any passing, I mean, I'm sure we don't have, but I'm just like, just want to make sure that things. Seem to be okay based off people being there as much as possible, because it is people serving themselves, right?
So I think, what we did, we put in safeguards thinking that people really might overconsume, that's really not the case.
Okay.
People are more there just if anything, it's maybe not even three drinks. So it's actually perfect, um, it's because it's, it's controlled, it's not being abused. And it serves a really important need for our guests, especially during the sunset time, which is, you know, the time when people like to, uh, take pictures and post things on.
Okay, so the other question I would ask or have an idea of is, how is the occupancy been between this six months? Because obviously as we're rolling out of the pandemic, occupancy getting more. I want to make sure that if we approve, right, and we don't have any review after this, being there's so many people now coming. How is that going to affect?
I have, I have Joey talk about that.
Yeah, we actually restrict the access to, to the lounge, so we only have forty two rooms, uh, out of the entire resort to get access to them.
Okay, not a problem. I have no other real questions.
Just as a point of order, the waiver request was approved, so, uh, we would only need a motion if we wanted to do something other than just continue to allow the waiver. Is that correct, that's right?
Um, uh, uh, correct, the waiver's been approved, this is just a six month review, so, uh, unless the commission has. Further action or restrictions or what have you, there's no action needed by the commission.
Great, thank you.
No, I have no other restrictions to add or anything.
Commissioner Hall.
No.
Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen, no further actions required.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Commissioners, can I have a type of action for agenda item number eighteen through twenty five inclusive?
Motion for adoption of decision and order for agenda item number eighteen through twenty five inclusive.
Second.
Been a motion in a second, any objections, reservations, hearing seeing none, I also, I, the motion carries decision and order shall be entered for agenda item. Number eighteen through twenty five inclusive. Do other business, calling a gen item number twenty six, liquor commission. Uh, executive session to consider the higher evaluation to special or discipline of an officer or employee, where consideration of matters affecting privacy may be involved. Pursuant to H R S ninety two dash five eight two. And I have a motion, Commissioners, to go into executive session.
Um, I don't need to read all the thing, mo- motion to approve, hold on, yeah, you got it, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, sorry. Motion. To consult with the boards, uh, for the commission to go into an executive session for the following reasons, to consult with the board's attorney or questions and issues on matters pertaining to. The board's powers, duties, privileges, and liabilities to consider the higher.
We don't need that one.
We're going down.
No, just the relevant.
It's, it's in your, the hearing's.
Yeah, I have it over here, but I did, I, I started reading all things, all right.
It's like, uh, yeah, it's in the, that's right.
Yes, I can.
Second.
Okay.
Wait, did, did you read the relevant language?
I thought you over.
Personnel one, the first you, it's the.
You can see, I, I hate you, right, that part, right? Am I wrong? Consider a higher valuation dismissal disposal of an officer or employee where considerations of matters, this is affecting privacy may be involved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any objections, reservations, hearing seeing none, I have both, also, I, the motion carries, we are now in executive session.
Who's getting kiss to him, I just ran him bows all out. Sorry.
Yeah, all right.
Here we are back from executive session for gen item number twenty six. There is no further action. Calling a gen item number twenty seven liquor administrator legislative update, Mr. I.
Nothing further to add?
Thank you. Calling a gen item number twenty eight liquor administrator administrative matters, Mr. I.
Nothing further to add?
Thank you very much. We are adjourned.
Bye.
Bye bye.